Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Helly.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item one is a motion for adoption of the agenda. We do have an addition under number four. With the addition, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number two is a motion approving the minutes from July 16th, 2018. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under recognition and awards, we have a proclamation for the American Legion Legacy Run Days. Is anybody here from the American Legion? I'll read the proclamation. Whereas there are 1.2 million dependent children of our military personnel, and whereas the September 11th, 2001 terrorist attacks upon the United States and the subsequent war on terrorism have left many children of America's military personnel as members of single-parent families, which often means their opportunities to attend college have been greatly diminished, and whereas to fill the gap in financial aid, the American Legion established the American Legion Scholarship Fund to help children of active-duty U.S. Military, National Guard, and Reserves Personnel, who are federalized and who have died during active duty after September 11th, 2001. And whereas the American Legion Legacy Run established in 2006 is a five-day motorcycle tour through five states that supports this scholarship fund, and will pass through the city of Austin on August 21st and 22nd, and whereas providing to children who are left behind is a civic duty, and helping to provide for the education is a powerful way to show our gratitude for the sacrifice of the parents who died protecting our country. Now, therefore, I, Thomas S. Steen, Mayor of the City of Austin, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim August 21st and 22nd, 2018, as the American Legion Legacy Run Days in Austin, and I invite all citizens to duly note the occasion. I did receive information from the visitor bureau, I believe there's like 200 and some 30-some motorcycles that are going to be coming through Austin and staying in Austin that night, so if you have a motorcycle and you're a veteran or not, I'm gonna, I have one, I'm gonna ride out and meet them and ride into town, and it really should be a lot of fun, and it's a good cause. Okay, moving on. Where are we now? Number four. The number four for the consent agenda, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five, under public hearings, is reviewing a tax abatement application for New Horizon Homes, William Stratton. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. We have an abatement application for New Horizon Homes. The value is estimated at $290,000. The application is in conformance with the adopted policy. Council action is requested to approve, and this is a public hearing.
Counsel, anything? Comments, questions? It's a public hearing. Is there anybody here today that wishes to speak to the counsel on this? If not, we need a resolution to approve or deny.
So moved. Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Six is a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from Bigelow and Linen Construction. Craig, if you have any additional?
Nope. This is valued at $269,000. Otherwise, it's in conformance. Council action is requested to approve, and a public hearing.
Once again, counsel, any comments? Is there anybody here who came here to speak to us or wishes to speak to the counsel on this? It is a public hearing. If not, we need a resolution to approve or deny.
So moved.
To what?
To approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number seven is a resolution authorizing the 2-0 death grant, 2018-19. Chief?
Yes, Mayor, this is something the Austin Police Department has participated in many years towards Zero Death Campaign. These are grant dollars to have the officers do the distracted driving wave, seatbelt waves, and the DWI wave, so we request the counsel approve the grant.
Okay, counsel, any comments or, if not, we need a resolution for number seven.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eight is a resolution approving a conditional donation agreement with the Austin Community Growth Ventures. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. As you recall, with the Community Recreation Center, Austin Community Growth Ventures is taking the responsibility to develop the building, build the building, and take responsibility for the building until such time as the building is constructed. This agreement simply outlines that, as well as has ACGV responsible for any professional services, bidding, contracting, cost overruns, and resolution of any deficiency items that would come about. We have plans and specifications. They're very extensive. They've been on file with the city clerk. We didn't put those in the packet per se as a separate attachment, but very lengthy documents that outline what would be delivered to the city at time of completion. So this agreement simply acknowledges that the city will take over ownership if constructed according to the plans as presented.
Counsel, any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine is a resolution approving a site access agreement with Austin Community Growth Ventures. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor members. Similarly, this allows ACGV to have access to the city property to construct the recreation center. Council action is requested to approve the site access agreement.
Counsel? If there's nothing further, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. With ten is a motion appointing Tom Steen, that's me, as a non-voting member of the YMCA Board. Craig, why are we doing this?
As members will recall, we have a lease agreement with the YMCA Board as part of that to ensure that there's a continuity between the city's ownership of the building and the Y's operation of the facility, that there is a non-voting member from the city on the YMCA Board. It's been suggested to have Mayor Steen, and you've agreed to do so.
I have.
So we'd like to propose having Mayor Steen serve as that non-voting member on the YMCA Board.
Counsel, anybody want to do it instead of me? Otherwise...
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Number 11 is a resolution declaring the property at 2014 Fifth Avenue Southeast a hazardous structure. Stephen? Or, Holly, I'm sorry.
This particular property has primarily a roofing problem. At least, that's what we've been able to inspect from the exterior. The owner of the property has given us additional information that there is a collapsed ceiling inside and other issues relating to the roof problem. He actually was removed from the property due to hypothermia at one point. He is living in a different location, but he, we've tried to work with him on numerous occasions. He will not repair the property for whatever reason. We're hoping that he will, you know, under these circumstances, decide maybe to sell the property, or perhaps we would talk to the counsel again about repairing the issue if possible.
Since we have three of them here, why don't you kind of explain to us what happens, the process, if he doesn't fix the property and we ultimately end up?
We will serve a complaint on, well, we'll serve the resolution that the counsel approves on the property owner. If the resolution is not complied with within a certain period of time, it's usually within a 30-day time span, 20 to 30 days, actually says in the resolution, then the matter would go to our city attorneys, and a complaint would be served on the property owner, and we would ask the court to give us an order allowing us to either repair or raise the property.
Okay, and we do end up taking properties down occasionally, right?
We do, but it, in some cases, the, we will work with the property owner through the whole process, and if they do become compliant, we will withdraw our petition from the court.
And they usually, we usually find a resolution, don't we? Working with the property owner?
Well, we've been, we've actually been focusing on properties that are vacant typically or that have been abandoned, so in those instances, we really have had no other option than to raise the property.
Okay.
There are usually title issues in those instances where the property is in the middle of maybe a tax foreclosure or tax forfeiture, or somebody has passed away and there's no probate process in order to transfer title.
Okay.
So the property just sit and become worse and worse and deteriorate further and further until they're not fit for occupation anymore.
I think it's good to have an explanation once in a while because it's such an impactful subject, and a lot of people wonder how that works, so thank you for the explanation. Counsel, does anybody have anything on this property?
Did you say they were behind on their taxes too?
Not in this instance, actually.
Okay, so that kind of puts a little bearing on it as well.
Yeah, I think this individual actually has the resources to repair it. There's just some other issues going on in his life that has made it a hurdle for him to get this done.
If we repair it, then that goes on his taxes.
Yes, yes.
We just need to help him prioritize. Okay, anybody else on number 11? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seventeen, or 12 is a resolution declaring the property at 1017 10th Avenue Southwest, a hazardous structure. Ms. Wallace, you want to do this one too?
Um, this is just a garage that is failing, is basically falling over.
Okay, anybody, counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thirteen is a resolution declaring the property at 1004 11th Avenue Southwest, a hazardous structure. Holly?
Again, this is similar to the first, first matter. The, the home is occupied. The property owners have, we've been working with them for almost three years. We've gotten many, many complaints about a foundation that's been severely damaged, and then the weatherproofing exterior of the home, and some other issues with the exterior. So we're hoping that this will, I guess, influence the property owners to finally make the repairs that are required.
Thank you. Counsel, if there's nothing further, we need a resolution for thirteen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Fourteen is a series of motions granting the Planning and Zoning Department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. A, 1303 Oakland Avenue East, the Ellis Property, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
O S P, 804 15th Street Northeast, the Johnson Property, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One, 10 12th Street Northeast, the Patel Property?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, D, 1203 11th Avenue Northwest, the Dennison Property?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we come to a section now, we're basically done with the meeting, and this is the section that we call citizens addressing the council. So if there's citizens present that want to address the council and things that are not on the agenda, this would be the time. Now, we do have, Tom, do you want to, should we wait, do you think, Greg, or till we go into the work session?
For the...
We're going to be discussing the Hormel Grants in the work session, so should we listen to it? Do you want to have them?
If they want to present here, they certainly can present here.
There's too many people.
Yeah. Everybody's here and stuff.
I'd rather they present than that we can go in and do our ranking on our own.
Okay. What I'm going to ask for is, do you have like a spokespin, a spokesperson? I mean, we can listen to everybody, but why don't you come on up here?
We just voted him in.
Right. And how many, how many people are here, stand up, that are here to support a pickleball court? Okay, and how many people are here opposing it? Okay. And there was what? What did you?
One more.
One more, okay.
No, I don't know. Do you know how many people we had standing up about, or can you, just for the record?
Eight, ten, twelve.
Fifteen. Fifteen. Okay, sir, give us your name and address and...
My name's Robert Solbaugh, and I live at 2305 8th Avenue Southwest.
Okay.
And I'm here along with this group of fine folks behind me to urge your serious consideration of the pickleball project through the Hormel Grant. We believe it would really enhance the quality of life in Austin, Minnesota. It's a great game that would support wellness and health and wellness. It's a fun sport that could be played by all ages. It's a good family sport, so it would really support families in the area. It would even support diversity because a lot of other people have seen us play, and they'll come up and ask us what it's about, and I think it would be a good way to connect with other groups in the, in the city, and really, really, it'd be a great thing for Austin all the way around.
Probably your best point is, where do you have to go to play now?
Albert Lee.
Yeah. We don't want that.
Albert Lee, so I would like this shirt to say Austin Pickleball Club, and Albert Lee.
Okay, now, I know, I mean, we'll let everybody talk if they want, but I think, you know, we get the message, and one thing I'll say is, I think local government really responds, and it isn't just the people here, but I think a lot of us have heard a lot of things about the pickleball court, and I know I'm going to be rating it, you know, highly and stuff, but I think you'll be, you know, wait and see, but we're going to go in for a work session after this. Now, normally, we'd have you come into the work session because the council meeting's technically over now, and you can speak, and ever since there's so many of you, we'll do it here.
Here we have a play.
Come on up.
That's, it's late time right now.
No, I, I mean, I think you're...
Does the council have any questions at us?
No.
Counsel? I don't.
Where do you play in Austin right now?
Well, at, at the YMCA, we play in the winter, and then Kim did let me put some lines down at South Grove Park, but the cement is kind of broken up, it's got some big cracks in it, the women didn't want to play there because they're afraid they're going to get hurt, and...
Is this year-round? I mean, do they do, you do this...
Yeah, we do this year-round.
You just have to clear the courts off.
Well, no, we, we do it inside at the Y right now.
You can't do it outside.
No, it gets too cold for the ball. It's kind of like tennis, it would be too, too cold.
I think I've seen you out at Nevelin.
Yeah, there, there are some, some lines down on a tennis court there. The issue of that is the tennis court net isn't the same as a pickleball net.
It's a little higher.
It's a little higher, and if you know, and, once you learn about pickleball, you'd find out that it's really important to keep the ball low or else you get killed, and so that kind of teaches you bad habits when you're trying to play on a tennis court.
Is it an Olympic sport yet? Not quite.
Not quite, but it is, it was carried by CBS the last two years in a row, so it's getting close.
You guys have done a good job of promoting it. I, I, you know, I can't guarantee anything, but I would anticipate a positive thing for you tonight.
And I, and I will say one last thing, Kim's choice of putting it out at Rotary Park, that's a great choice because there's no housing around there, there's no residential housing where the sound would bother anybody. There's already resources out there, there's restrooms, there's parking, there's even extra parking on the streets and even across the street.
I think that's a perfect location, because right now, we're not maximizing that, you know, we've got the basketball court, but obviously, we could get something else in there, and like you say, you guys have done it.
That's it, squeeze it in.
How many courts, so six courts? I mean, that might take up like a...
Well, six courts would technically fit on a court and a half of tennis, so...
It's, it's just a little larger...
They're smaller sized than tennis courts.
So it's like four tennis courts? And there's enough room there easily?
Mayor, when you look at this footprint of it, it's just a little larger than the basketball slab that's down there already.
Okay, so we have room down there?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And, and they do play at Ellis in the winter, we, when we do our volleyball, we have a gym available for that as well.
Thanks, I forgot about Ellis.
You did say that, you know, kids are playing it too, right?
Yes.
Some are family activity.
And I think you had a summer program?
Yep. For the kids? We did this year. We didn't get anybody to sign up this year, and I really don't know why, but last year we had some kids, so we just keep trying to put that in, and it would be good to have a family event with it. There are people that check out paddles from us if they're trying to do a family thing.
And this would allow us to have...
So you need a hard surface court, so, hard surface court, so like it, you wouldn't put it in the dome in the winter.
Correct.
What happens now is, we go into the other room, and we get a list of about nine different things, and we make suggestions to the Hormel Foundations for what they will fund, and usually, if there's 13 things, don't they usually fund about the top 10?
Well, we usually end up...
In the past, we've been fortunate enough to end up between four and probably $450,000 worth of funding for projects. It all depends on how projects rank, how the impacts of the community are reviewed when the foundation contributions committee gets together to look at those. So I think right now, we've got $700 and some thousand dollars worth of requests within the review process you look at over here, and then you guys will rank them, we'll take them to the foundation, and the contributions committee will review them and make recommendations based on the funding that's been allocated to them.
So you have to understand that this would take up about a quarter of that grant, so, you know...
And the contributions committee doesn't necessarily have to follow our rankings.
Correct.
Make their own decisions. It's just advice.
Yeah, they generally have, but they don't have to, they're not bound by it.
The other, the other thing, and Tom or Kim, you can come in on that, is that they, sometimes the Hormel Foundation might fund in part, you know, they might not fund the entire amount that we, that is asked for in the grant, but there would be time, if that were true, if that were to happen, for any of them, that, that that project could maybe be moved forward to by other, you know, seeking out funds from other, other resources. Yeah. Yeah. Will this be additional work for our park and rec staff?
No.
Less than all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you have to look at, it's, it's a surface, so it's, it's a surface much like a tennis court surface, so, you know, in, in the realm of capital, then you would, 10 years down the road, you may have to do something to it, but it's, it's no different than, than any other...
Other than weeding in around the fence.
Right. It would be a fenced area.
Yeah.
And I'll give free pickleball lessons for anybody in the...
Thank you.
Ma'am, give us your name and your address.
Oh, I'm Cindy Horn, and I live at 51312 290th Street in Austin, and I just wanted to also say that I do go over to Albert Lee because of the pickle courts that they have, pickleball courts that they have there, but they also have a tournament, so then, that's another source of income that would come into the city because it would require people to have housing, and it, you know, just generates more people in town. So I just wanted to add that, and also that I do know, I know some kids that Blooming Prairie teaches pickleball during their gym time, so, yes.
Fine, fine.
So, so do, they do in Austin as well.
Oh, they do, and I just knew Blooming Prairie, so, just a little adding.
Okay, anybody else?
The statistics, will you, is this for the next, next part of the evening or...
I can't, come on, I can't hear you, I'm kind of deaf.
We're doing it, man. Counsel for now.
Okay, you have to give us, if anybody that stands there have to give us their name
I was just wondering if you wanted statistics about the pickleball trend, or is this going to be for the next meeting?
Council, is anybody?
Say no to statistics, I think I just seem to put a fork in my eye, but you guys have done a nice job promoting it.
You guys have done...
I think your credibility is diminished, but Craig Jones is out there, you know, that might, that might bring it down a notch in my book. Yeah. Shouldn't have brought Jones, no.
Anybody else? Bonnie, is this what you're here for, to support the pickleball?
Well, that, I don't know.
All right, so if that's, are we done with pickleball? Council, any, council want to make any statements?
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to, now what we'll do is, we're going to finish our meeting here, and then we're going to go into the other room, and we'll rate things, I don't know if there's going to be room for everybody in there, unless you want to do that in here, Tom, I don't know.
We need to...
And we'll do it in the other room, but, you know, I mean, one person, take four people's phone numbers, and you'll be fine if you call everybody up after the meeting, but you'll get a pretty good idea once we get done in there, and I think we're doing that right away, aren't we?
Well, they can listen to the budget for the first two hours or so, and then we can do that.
That's a lot of fun. Okay, so we've done, are there any other citizens that want to address the council on any issues other than pickleball? We've done that already. Okay, so now we're doing reports and recommendations. Craig, what do we have?
Do you want to take counsel?
Who want to what?
Take council members, if they have any reports.
Sure. Well, oh, councilmember, oh, yeah. Do you think we always start with here?
Nothing, your honor.
Nothing. Yeah.
Yes, we did have a park and rec board meeting last week, highlight of which was talking about the park and recs and the nature centers' requests from the foundation, of course, the pickleball courts, also the port-in-play surface for a local park, and a couple of things for the nature center, they're looking at the continuing funding of their educational programs, and also this year, looking for funding for a plan for, master plan for the regional park designation, which will, if they're able to get that done, hopefully, and in reality, probably bring lots of more money in and a lot more attention to the nature center, so that'll be a good thing to back as well. That's all I have, your honor.
I just have one thing to mention as, and it's not politically motivated, since I'm not running for any office, but August fourteenth is the primary election day, and a lot of times, people don't pay a whole lot of attention to that, I'm afraid, so I encourage everyone to vote. There are a number of races that have a primary going on for the, for, you know, to determine who's going to go on to the general election, so please mark your calendars for August fourteenth and vote.
It is so important that people get out and vote this year. Laura?
We are twenty days away from the Austin Artworks Festival, it's a two-day celebration of the arts, music, visual arts, authors, and so forth, so we're excited, we hope everybody's circling their, their calendars, now is the time to sign up for every year two-hour volunteer slot because there are still air-conditioned positions left on the roster. I also want to send a greeting out to Austin native Charlie Parr, he was scheduled to close down our outdoor music stage on Sunday, and he suffered an injury and broke his shoulder and isn't going to be able to, to play with us, so stay tuned for an update on the, on the music, but Charlie, we're thinking of you and hoping for fast healing.
I'd like to reinforce Janet's message, please vote next week.
Yeah, Paul? Craig?
I don't have anything. Steven, Julie, Brian, and Kim have a few items.
Okay, we'll start.
Take your pick.
We'll start with Julie.
Yes, the summer reading program at the library is wrapping up this week, if you have your forms still, when you want to turn them in, you have till the end of the week to do that. Our total registration this year was, we had a seven hundred and eleven participants in the summer reading program, and for program attendance, we had two thousand seven hundred and twenty-four people show up over about a seven or eight week period, so it was great, we appreciate all the volunteers and everyone who came out to the library, and look forward to our fall programming.
Well, we appreciate you and the other librarians, you really made that kind of a excellent spot. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. The last day for the pool is August sixteenth at eight thirty P.M. The splash pad will remain open as the weather permits, you enter from the parking lot gate, that will be free. The doggy dip is then on Friday the seventeenth from six to seven thirty, and there is, the last roller derby bout is on the eighteenth at Packer Arena at seven fifteen.
Okay, thank you. Who else were you doing?
Brian.
Craig, or Brian?
Mayor, council, just a reminder that tomorrow night, evening is National Night Out at Veterans Pavilion and Banjell Park. This year, we'll be serving the food at the Veterans Pavilion, have a little more room, so come out and see the police vehicles, fire trucks, and Gold Cross ambulance will all be there, so come and enjoy the evening.
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock till eight o'clock, yes.
Brian, will there be a K-9 demonstration?
K-9 is scheduled to be there, yes.
All right, that's always a highlight.
Volunteer.
Yeah. Hey, do you need a victim? Right here, I think you need a victim. We're running short of victims for those dogs. Who wants to do it? Who else had a report?
We have Ann.
Ann, Ann.
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate that the election is next Tuesday, August fourteenth, polls will open at seven A.M. Around the city, it'll be open until eight P.M., and if citizens have questions about where they vote, they can visit the Secretary of State's website, we're going to have something on our Facebook page, or they can call City Hall, and we can help them out.
Can you kind of explain a little bit, this is a primary, right?
Yes, this is a primary.
Do you need, can you vote one party, both parties? A lot of people haven't voted in primaries, I think we'll probably get out this year.
Right, on the front of your ballot, there's a Democratic side and a Republican side, and you choose, you have to pick one side to vote on, and then when you flip it over, that's the local races for the nonpartisan races, and then you can vote for whoever you'd like on the back of the ballot.
Okay, excellent. Anybody have any questions on that? I mean, I know a lot of people don't do it because they get confused.
Ann, how many local races are there on the ballot?
There's a primary for First Ward, Third Ward, and At-Large at our level here, and then there's also the County Auditor Treasurer, and then there's a couple seats for the county commissioners, but that just depends on where you live in the city, which commissioner you would be voting for.
Okay. And Stephen, you have a report?
I do. Work across the street is progressing well, the power plant demolition is complete, that contractor is moving out equipment, they have one last well to cap that they are currently working on, kind of in the northeast corner of the property, and, and the demolition is complete. The contractor for the rec center project has mobilized on site, and they've started staking out some things, and council approved some authorizations for that work just tonight at our meeting, so that transition has been seamless from one contractor to the next, and then our levy contractor is continuing to work over there, also working on Fourth Avenue right out here in front of the building, so that work is progressing, and we anticipate things to start wrapping up with the roadway work by the end of August and completion of the levy by early September.
On construction?
Yeah, one, one other thing is mosquito spraying, we have sprayed for mosquitoes twice this year, we sprayed twice right before the Fourth of July, we budget for three sprays per year, and our third one's going to be tonight, we like to spray right before the Fourth of July and right before the fair, so we're going to spray tonight for mosquitoes.
Truck?
Yep, two trucks.
Sometimes I know we use a plane.
Yeah, two, no, two truck, in this case, two truck-mounted units that will go around the community, again, they look at, they don't go down every roadway, they look at the wind direction, if the wind is out of the north, they'll spray the avenues and let the wind drift it into the backyards in different areas, if the wind's out of the west, then they will go down the streets, so we don't necessarily go down every roadway.
Pet concerns? What should they, you know, is there any concerns for dogs or cats or anything?
No, this...
I don't think so, close their windows.
Yeah, close your windows, but there's a, there's a smell to it, but it is not harmful to pets, only the adult mosquito.
Okay, good.
Stephen, is the detour, you said, is that, that's the road construction part that will be done by potentially the end of August?
Correct, the detour going on right out here, yep, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's our last report, so unless anybody has anything, we are entertaining a motion to adjourn till Monday, August twentieth, two thousand eighteen, at five thirty.
So move.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll take a short break and meet in the conference room across the hall. We talk a lot of pickleball, I guess. Thank you. We love you. We love you.